Okay, good evening and welcome to this evening's Board of Education meeting. I call this meeting to order at 5:05. Ms. Januun, please take the role. Here.
Mrs. Elzayat.
Here.
Mrs. Fawaz.
Here.
Ms. Kaminski.
Here.
Mr. Sabah.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move the agenda around a little bit. We're gonna start off with, we have some discussion items that a board member would like to bring forward.
Do we have to make a motion to do that?
Uh, yes, because we're gonna, um, no, we don't have to have a motion to have the discussion items.
You don't have to have a motion to move the agenda items around?
Do we have to move the, do we have to do that, Kristin?
Or can we just do it?
Madam Chair, I think it's at your discretion.
Yeah, I don't think that we need to have a motion. We're just waiting for the candidate, so let's get some housecleaning done. Okay, uh, there was a discussion that needed to be held about security. It's not on the agenda. I already asked Kristin. It's not on here.
Okay. So, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just wanted to bring to the board's attention that I've gotten three phone calls of concerns about Blue Line at the middle school. And so I had mentioned it, Mrs. Elzayat, and I know she's in the process of scheduling it, but I wanted to bring it out for the whole board to know because in years past, Blue Line walked the school and walked around, and supposedly that they're not. And there was concerns about that. And I know there's, we all know there's been some things at the middle school going on, so I just wanted to make sure we were gonna address it.
Okay. Ms. Elzayat, do you have anything that you want to follow up on? Do you have a date chosen?
Um, so I talked to Youssef and I asked, I sent an email to trustee Fawaz and to Vice Chair Sue Kaminski, and we are going to schedule a meeting. I was asking for, I believe it was the last week in November. After talking to Youssef, it sounds like for him to be able to get stuff together for the meeting to be productive, probably the first or second week of December. So I'm just confirming with Youssef and Kristin, we'll get a date down and then I'll ask for agenda items. And then we'll come back and update.
Do we have any dates? Which dates are we looking at?
I said first week, I said last week in November. So after talking to Youssef, he suggested in order for them to get, gather some information from the schools and see what we have so far, which it sounds like we don't have anything, which I was really shocked at. Uh, not concerning Blue Line. I also talked to Youssef about like active shooter plans, emergency plans, stuff like that, because I wanted to have, call the committee together for that, too.
Yeah, actually, I read that in one of the updates, that there was questions that Mr., anyways, principal here at the middle, at the middle school. Um, I know that I read that there was a lot of work to be done with that and Mr. Awada was helping.
I believe so.
So I'm not sure if maybe Mr. Awada needs to be involved in that meeting.
I'll talk to Youssef about it. And he said that he's gonna gather the right people and the info on the district side, and then we'll take it from there. So as soon as we, I'm waiting for him actually to give me a better week that I can send out to Salwa and Sue to call for the meeting.
Okay, Ms. Kaminski.
Um, maybe because of all the transition and everything in administration, we did have a presentation about, and I can't remember the acronyms now, but it was to run what to do in an active shooter situation. And the students were presented with a video, but this was four years ago. Probably Run High Fight. One's Been Done Son, yes.
Yeah, probably Run High Fight.
Yes, thank you.
It wasn't Run High Fight, it was the old system, and I know that we haven't talked about it since.
Yeah, and so.
So I think we need to move to that.
We really need to bring that to the forefront, too. So thank you for doing that, Danielle.
Oh, no worries. As soon as we get something down, we'll let you guys know.
Okay, thank you.
Vice President Kaminski, what are the concerns that you hear from parents about Blue Line?
Um, actually, and I know that the staff is supposed to go to the principal. I had three teachers call me, and part of it is because my son used to be a security guard years ago at Riverside. He used to walk nonstop. There's problems in the hallway, and I was told, I don't know if these teachers got together, but they all said the same thing, that nobody's patrolling the halls. And it used to be that Blue Line walked up and down at Riverside. They're having a lot of scuffles, some fights, and there was concern that every time they see Blue Line, Blue Line is sitting. I have not confirmed any of this, and I certainly don't want to make it sound like there is an issue because I know Blue Line's been very helpful in the past. Maybe they've been told to do something differently. That's just why we need to, you know, address it and find out what everybody knows, because I think there's a communication gap.
Have those teachers gone to Mr. Caseval and expressed that concern?
I suggested that to all three of them.
I would, just, Madam Chair, I think that should always be the first line defense for our teachers. Instead of coming to the board or even the administration, they need to go directly to the school principals.
I agree.
Because that's the fastest way to resolve this.
I agree.
For us to wait until the first week in December, that's just, that's absurd. On our, we can't do anything right now.
Right.
Like Mr. Caseval needs to be brought in right away. Those teachers need to feel like they can go to him right away.
I don't think it's just at the middle school, though.
Well, no, I only got middle school calls, so I don't know, but I received.
If we're hearing it in other schools, the principals should be the ones made aware of this.
I agree.
I understand, but we also need to have those other discussions. Um, I think what has happened is we need to look at the job descriptions and see what they can and can't do.
Sure.
And look at how we're paying out.
Yeah, but if there's a scuffle, they gotta break that up. They gotta be in the hallway present, so if they're not there.
Right, but how much are they allowed to do? That's what we need to understand.
Okay.
Okay?
Was that in the contract when they were brought on?
Initially, when they were brought on, they were told they could only physically touch a student and restrain if absolutely necessary or to break up bodily harm to somebody else where they were in danger. Um, then they were supposed to be walking last I knew, walking around and basically patrolling, and any kids that were skipping classes, walking in the hallways during class time, they were supposed to bring that to the attention to administration by taking the student back to the office or to class. I don't know what the current situation is.
Yeah.
I don't even know how many Blue Line we have at each school anymore.
There's quite a few here. I've been here, both two of my kids go here. I don't want to handcuff Mr. Caseval.
Oh, I don't either, and I told.
Unfortunately, that's what's happening when we don't go to him with issues that are concerned the teachers.
Right.
They should be going directly to him to give him a chance to fix it.
And I told all three of them that that's what they needed to do, so.
Okay, yes.
So if we have those specific examples, I thought you just wanted to talk about Blue Line in general, but if you have specific examples of things that have been going on, I prefer we don't wait till December either. Can we just ask Youssef to look into this situation? And then, of course, we'll bring it to the table at the committee and look into the other stuff about the contract and that. Um, that's my recommendation.
I agree. I think that we need to move on as soon as possible and understand what is happening and why it's happening.
Yeah, definitely.
And I think based off the meeting and what we decide to do, we should implement throughout the, all the schools simultaneously. Because if it's happening here, it's more than likely happening at the high school or somewhere else.
Agree.
And we need to have that discussion with them to see what they are and what they are not allowed to do, so.
Ms. Januun, I do know Mr. Awada and all the administrators are working on the EOP, which will come to the board in December for approval.
Okay.
And will be emergency planning at each school. They've been working on it for a while.
Yeah.
Okay.
Emergency operations.
Yes.
EOP.
Ms. Januun?
So one more thing I maybe in the, during your meeting that you guys, whenever you set that up, is I thought we had mentioned, or I thought we had discussed before, making sure that all of the windows were uncovered.
That's part of the plan that they will be bringing to the board, and everything should be included in that.
So what we'll do is, once we have the date down, I had told Sue and Salwa that once we have the date down, I'll ask for agenda items.
Okay.
Or things that people would like covered. And I suggest we do the same thing for all the other committees, is just start getting a wrap, our heads around. I had it here, where to go.
Well, let's start with the Security Committee and then the other groups.
Yeah, but I think we just start getting a handle on all of them, so.
I suggested that early on when we, when the committees were assigned, and I haven't heard from anyone. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna take my committees, everybody's welcome to do the same. Take your committee, plan a date, and then we can move forward with the information that you want to bring back to us. Okay?
Security is obviously, I'm just, I just, I just don't want, because I go to both, obviously. I don't see that many problems or don't hear about that many problems. I'm concerned to hear all of you saying how many issues we have, that are they not being brought to us? Are they just minuscule items that don't need to be brought to us, or is there a major issue?
And I, I don't know.
Well, let's not make assumptions.
Well, I'm just, I'm just trying to.
Right, what we should do is.
Because I know there isn't those big issues, but I'm just trying to see what people are hearing, because it's.
Okay, let's not make those assumptions. Let's wait until the security team meets and brings back the information to the board, and then we can move from there. Okay? Ms. Januun?
I'm all set.
All set? Okay, so now we're gonna move on to, um.
Oh, Madam Chair, were we going to open up to other discussion items, or was this the only discussion?
If there is another one, yeah.
So there is one thing that I wanted to mention. Um, one of the things that I've heard in lieu of, in light of COVID and the rapid positivity rates, is that a lot of districts, I don't want to say a lot because I don't have an exact number, but there are some districts that are going to go virtual after the Thanksgiving holiday. And I don't want us to have to make a decision today. I just wanted to bring it to you guys, see what you thought of it. I wouldn't mind doing it for seven to 10 days after the holiday because everybody's gonna be with their families, and their families are gonna be with other families. And I just would like to be a little bit proactive in keeping the kids home, not off of school, just going virtual for, you know, seven to 10 days after the holiday.
And people are gonna be traveling. I agree with you, Mrs. Elzayat.
Hold on, hold on. If I may, let's wait and see what the administration comes to us with. I don't agree with that, to be honest with you, but we can have our discussion. Um, we, you know, we also have to remember that some of the families work, so it is up for discussion. Let's wait and see what the administration brings back to us.
Yep, I agree. I just wanted to bring it forward, let you guys start thinking about it and look at some options instead of ending up in a situation where so many cases.
Right, I haven't heard of any other districts doing that. I work in another district. We, I don't, haven't seen a plan, and I don't foresee them doing it. Um, so let's see what happens when the administration brings it forward.
Yeah, I don't want us to, though, and that's why I said not a lot. I don't want us to only base our decisions off of what other districts are doing.
Well, we just, we just had the building closed for a week.
Oh, no, I know, but I'm just saying Thanksgiving's coming. There's gonna be a lot of mingling.
Yes, Ms. Januun, go ahead.
So clearly there's mingling happening regardless. I mean, if we had to close the building with or without Thanksgiving, clearly there's mingling happening anyway. My concern is, is we take them virtual for seven to 10 days, and then a week and a half later, we are on Christmas break or winter break anyway. I personally, I just, the back and forth to me is just not healthy and not, I just don't feel like this is.
So you think we should close through the break?
No, I'm not saying to close, go virtual at all. I'm, my, what I'm saying is if we, looking at the dates, I mean, we're off the 24th, 25th, 26th. We come back the 29th. If we were to close for seven to 10 days following that, I mean, we go on, we go on winter break at the end of the 17th, the end of the day of the, that Friday. They come back, so they take the winter Thanksgiving break, stay virtual for seven to 10 days, come back for a week and a half and then go virtual again, or off? I just, that back and forth to me just doesn't seem.
So I know a lot of the decisions that were made last year.
Hold on, Ms. Elzayat, if you don't mind. Um, I really don't want to startle people that are out in the public watching this at this point. I think we should wait and see what the administration brings back to us, and we can go with that discussion. I don't want to make any assumptions.
Oh, I'm not making assumptions.
Yeah, I just don't want to startle anybody because, you know, families might start getting upset that we're not being honest with them. They're gonna assume that this is already in the plan, and we don't want to do that. Let's wait and see what the administration brings back, and then we can have that discussion as it, as it happens. If you don't mind. Yes, can I?
Yep, go ahead. Oh, me? Or them? Um, this is not in the works, nor did I ever think it was. I simply said, I think we should start thinking about it. So if you want to wait for the administration, absolutely. One of the first things I said was, we shouldn't make any decisions today. Just something to think about.
Okay, thank you, it's fully noted. Mr. Sabah.
Yeah, I'm not gonna disagree with Ms. Elzayat or agree with her in that, for that aspect, but I, being a parent of children who are sitting at home, it's very difficult on the kids. And it's, but last year, I know that when we did come back, we did decide after spring break to do the same thing because of the mingling. So to your point, it's something the administration needs to think about, obviously. It doesn't have to happen, but it's definitely something that needs to be taken into consideration just for the sake of that three-day weekend, and it could be, it could cause alarm, not to say it will. We'll fear 15,000 cases on Friday alone, okay, in the state of Michigan, and 87 deaths. So the numbers are creeping up. Again, I'm not saying I agree with it because I see both sides of the, but I think the administration definitely needs to have a plan in place. I agree with you, Ms. Elzayat.
Absolutely, thank you.
Ms. Fawaz.
Um, to that point, with Thanksgiving and Christmas, and like she said, with the days off, I'm indifferent whether to do it or not do it, and I know it's something we should be thinking about. Um, but I think we need to be proactive in thinking what to do, just because we might be just forced to be reacting, because more than likely, you know, between Thanksgiving and Christmas, everybody is together with their families. So definitely something to think about, and if we wanna, if we follow what we did at spring break, it's probably, it's consistent with what we decided to do.
So then are we closing again after the New Year? I mean, are we going virtual again after the New Year? What, at what point do we, I don't understand, when do we keep them in school and say that we have to play it by ear? Because unfortunately, that, then after Easter, are we doing the same thing again? What is, maybe, maybe now we need to, yeah, I mean, I, okay.
Okay.
But you know, but can I, you might be right. I mean, and if we do let, come back after Thanksgiving and see the numbers take a horrible spike, then maybe we do need to do something after the winter break, or maybe we, you know. So maybe this is the test run, I guess. But again, it's up to the administration to bring it, and we can go from there, but yeah, you never know.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, let's move on to the purpose of this meeting, other than the discussion items. We're gonna go back to interview a candidate for the Board of Education, trustee position created by the resignation of Mr. Ed Garcia. We have Mr. Hassan Baydoun.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What happened to my question?
Hi.
Good evening. Okay, go ahead and, the approval of the agenda, Ms. Januun, and then we'll move on to the.
Board of Education approval is recommended for the items listed on the November 15th, 2021 Board Agenda.
Support.
So we have a motion on the floor from Ms. Januun that the Board of Education approval is recommended for the items listed on the November 15th, 2021 Board Agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Welcome, Mr. Hassan Baydoun, how are you?
Great, thank you for having me.
We're very happy to see you today. Okay, what we're gonna do is I'm just gonna ask some questions, and the board, if they would like to take notes. And then if there's any discussion item, and then we'll move from there.
Okay.
Okay, the first question we have for you is, briefly tell us about yourself, highlighting your involvement with the activities of the Crestwood Schools in any specific areas that would help us gain knowledge regarding your candidacy.
So I moved into the Crestwood School District probably around 12 years ago. I'm a father of three, three students in the district. I've been for five years volunteering as a football coach at Riverside and Crestwood. For another five years, I've been officially a football coach at Crestwood on the varsity team. We do a lot as an organization, I'd say a football organization, after school, tutoring, mentoring, workouts, things of that nature, things that don't show on the football field, but actually in the classroom and at home. Uh, we continuously do that as a team. From there, many things are brought to my attention that I feel I can try to help, but there's only so much you can do as one individual, right? You need to bring the community together, and I think that's the best way for me to do it, and what I can bring to the table, is this forum.
Thank you. Okay, and why do you want to serve on the school board? What prompted this decision?
You know, a little bit of what I just touched on is basically looping in the community from where I see it on ground zero. You know, in the school, with the kids, doing all these extracurricular activities. I know a lot of these kids were just helping out in a turkey drive at a local organization just this past weekend, things like that, and which makes it really passionate for me to be a part of.
Thank you. What do you believe is the greatest challenge facing the Crestwood School District?
I don't think that's fair for me to answer right now in this, in this seat. I think I would need to learn a little bit more of what goes on, I would say, with the administration. But there's one thing I feel that's very important, is to empower the people in place to bring those topics to our discussion in this forum. I think that's very important, but for me to assess what I see on the outside, I don't think that's a fair assessment.
Okay. And because of the issues we deal with, confidentiality is a requirement. How would you safeguard the confidential business of the district?
So in my current role as a Global Commodity Manager for General Motors, we do frequent, often training in regards to confidentiality. Uh, I've been a part of numerous non-disclosure agreements, and even at some point, secret, GM secret information that can't even be published within the organization. So I know how it works, and I do understand how to abide by it.
Okay, what experiences have you had in working with diverse persons, students or families, including other ethnic groups, and exceptional children?
So I'm gonna start with some of the training that I've received. Uh, General Motors is working toward to be one of the most inclusive organizations in the world, and I believe we're on that path. And those continuous trainings help us understand the differences between right and wrong, and also how to, how to treat everyone fairly. But just going back, I have had numerous occasions, being a coach, dealing with diversity and understanding some limitations from, you know, different kids, and understanding how they can all be different in their own way, but at the end of the day, they're all students, they're all athletes, they're all kids.
What approach would you take to helping pass millage renewals, millage increases, or other elections?
I think the most proactive approach is being proactive, right? Is discussing them in this forum. Uh, these meetings are all televised and for everyone in the community to access at their disposal. I think once we come up with a collective agreement and how to go toward it, I think everyone in here has to do their individual duties, I would say, to get out there and put the word out and support that proposal, if that.
Okay. If cuts in programs for students became necessary for financial reasons, what would you cut? That's a hard one.
Yeah, that, that would need definitely more information, to my knowledge. But again, I'll go back to what I answered previously. I think we need to lean on the administration that's in place today to give us their recommendations and bring it to this forum, and then collectively, we should assess that situation and move forward from there.
Okay. At times you will be caught between legalities, opposing points of view. There may be a difference between your personal point of view and a policy or the law that you are required to uphold as a board member. How will you handle this?
Just stick to the law. We're all law-abiding citizens, and that's the most important thing, is to just stick to the law.
Okay. And what is the role of a school board member?
It's more than a role, it's being a part of the fabric of this community, right? I think we can, we need to be open-minded because there'll be a lot of opinions coming your way. There'll be a lot of different scenarios where people want to run by you. I think the most important thing is remembering why you're a part of the school board, and that putting the kids first.
Okay. That's the last of the questions that we have for you. Does anybody feel like there's any further discussion that they would like to ask or anything?
I don't.
Okay.
I'd like to make a recommendation.
Okay, we're gonna let you make the recommendation, Mr. Sabah.
Yeah, I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education appoint Mr. Hassan Esbeydoun to fill the vacant seat on the Crestwood Board of Education until the next regular school election is prescribed by Section 380.110-2 of the Revised School Code.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Sabah, supported by Ms. Januun, that the Crestwood Board of Education appoint Mr. Hassan Baydoun to fill the vacant seat on the Crestwood School Board, Board of Education, until the next regular school election as prescribed by the, by Section 380.1102 of the Revised School Code. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. We're very happy for you. Okay, with that, we would like to do the Oath of Office. If, Fudal Commissioner L, we're very happy to see you. Thank you for coming. You want to come right up here by the flag, and, oh, the flag is all the way in the corner.
We can move forward.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Am I moving it, or are we?
Um, Kristin, will he have to sign anything?
I've got it over here.
Who, is Mr. Haddous signing? Okay, just Mr. Baydoun, okay. Thank you.
Do I, I have this, because now I know he's gonna follow my command.
That's why we put you in charge. Okay.
Congratulations. This honor really, it's not about you or the board, it's about the future generation, our kids, how we lead them, and how we manage the school system for them. And I know you're gonna make us proud of that. To that raise your right hand, and state your name and duty after me.
I, Hassan Esbeydoun.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and affirm the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duty of office of member of the Board of Education.
And faithfully discharge the duties of the office and membership of the Board of Education
of Crestwood School District according to the best of my ability.
Of the Crestwood School District to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much for coming out.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any further discussion from, oh, welcome.
Yeah, welcome.
This is your first official seating. You're part of the team, we're excited to have you.
Welcome aboard.
With that being said, is there any other comments or questions from the school board?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Elzayat.
I just wanted to congratulate Hassan Baydoun and welcome him to the Crestwood Board of Education. And I wanted to thank everybody who came to support you today. Wonderful to see all your family here.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, and we're very lucky to have you. Just your, your, thank you. Your resume really shined, so we appreciate that. Thank you, okay, with all that, motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Okay, supported by? Well, I have you as, because I heard you say, okay, supported by Mr. Sabah. Okay, supported by, well, I have you as, cuz I heard you say, okay, supported by Mr. Seba. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I have 5:35.
A 5:35?
Yep.
Good night, everyone.